Might help if I unmute. Good evening, everyone. This meeting of the Essex County Board of County Commissioners is hereby called to order. Due to the COVID-19 outbreak and to be in compliance with the Governor's executive order, this meeting is being conducted remotely. The public is able to view this meeting via live stream on Facebook and YouTube. A link for the live stream is posted on the Commissioner website. To all participating in this meeting, please be mindful to put your microphone on mute until speaking. Additionally, please identify yourself by putting your name on the record each time before you speak. Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper. Absent. Commissioner Gill.
Here.
Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano. Absent. Commissioner Ricardo.
Here.
Commissioner Sebo.
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Here.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Here. We will omit this salute to the flag since we are meeting remotely. However, let us pause for a moment of silence for all of those who have lost their lives due to COVID and any other unfortunate incidents. Thank you. I have before me certification from the clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Madam Clerk, are there any transcripts to be approved?
Mr. President, there is one. For Conference Board meeting, September 1, 2021.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Commissioner Vice President Pamares to approve the transcript. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So move.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any topics of discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. We have an update from the administration on the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan.
Right, very good. Mrs. Jackson.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Anthony Abaleo has worked closely with the administration over the years on these two programs. I'm going to give you an update on where we are and where we appear to be going under these two programs. Mr. Abaleo.
Thank you, Anthony Abaleo. I'd like to first go over really what the two programs, what they gave us, where we're at as far as available balances, then I'll go through the categories of the expenditures. The CARES Act, the county got upfront approximately $139 million. There's about $1 million five left in that program. That program will end at the end of this year. That program will be fully expended by that time. As far as the American Rescue Plan is concerned, they gave us two installments. The first installment coming approximately in June of this year of $77,848, with the second installment coming June of next year. So the first installment was inserted. It only starts March 3 of this year and will end December 20, December of 2024. There's $52 million left in that grant. To go through the categories as far as expenditures are concerned, most crossover between CARES and American Rescue, there are a couple of slight differences which I'll explain. The first three, four categories involve county employees. When the program first started, the CARES Act was mainly covering those people who were quarantined or were out on COVID. And then the CARES Act covered the overtime and the straight time for whatever people that were replaced. That's both payroll and fringe. Since then, once the county started testing people, the CARES Act covered the expenditures for the testing. That was any employee who was working at the testing site, particularly sheriff's officers, that were either working straight time because they were redeployed from the courts or overtime. After that, once the county got into, which was December of last year, started getting into the actual vaccinations, the cost shift mainly for the sheriff's office, but also for some county employees because the county also started a call center. So salaries involving those employees were also covered and fringe were covered by the CARES Act. Going into next year, the American Rescue Plan will pick up the cost of the salarying wages for mainly the sheriff's office and regular county employees. The American Rescue Act, which is the one area where they're more restrictive, will not cover people who are quarantined or out sick. That's fortunately, that number has been going down dramatically since the beginning of the COVID problem. When the county started to reopen, there was an issue with kids still being home so that the county was able to help out some of the people with their daycare reimbursements. Also then, at that time when we started with people working from home, there was a startup cost for IT, mainly laptops, printers, servers and security for... Then, once the testing started, excuse me, once the vaccine started, those vaccine sites had to be manned with equipment, IT equipment, Wi-Fi, things of that nature. So the CARES Act, it covered all that. That has gone down since that's a lot of one-time purchases. The next two is the bulk of what the county has been doing. Essex County is probably the only or one of the few counties that has put both testing and vaccines to the forefront. We have, the county has three sites, Sears, Kmart, and Essex County College, as well as a bunch of pop-up sites, plus now a mobile unit which was paid from the CARES Act, actually. So there's a lot of costs involved, nursing, syringes, Band-Aids, the initial setups of the tables, the chairs, the booths. All that came out of CARES, and if there's any additional costs, oh, testing kits themselves, that will continue into the American Rescue Plan. Food distribution. While everything was going on, there were a lot of people out of work. The county reached out to the residents of the county and they did a tremendous amount of food distribution. PPE, other supplies, initially, initial purchases of PPEs, which has now been less, but you still see a lot at the testing sites and a lot of the vaccine sites. It also included the Plexiglas for the windows or for the desks and the signage for the sites, things of that nature. Corrections had their own COVID issues, that and the fact that they had three things that happened. They had to do their own Plexiglas and all, and since I put it as a separate category because it is a large number, they had to do that. Their food services changed completely. It went from putting food on the tray to where every piece of food had to be put into a separate container. That was additional cost. There was lately be able to be visiting with the families or the lawyers. They've had to do a teleprompting type of system, which is also included in this. It was paid by CARES and it's also been continued into American Rescue. Enhanced cleaning, that became more expensive as they started doing the testing sites and the vaccine sites because that daily among the county facilities, but also these other sites. Outreach program involved robo calls, mailing, commercials telling about the test sites, telling about the vaccines. This week it even actually involved the pediatric type of testing of COVID vaccinations. American Rescue has a different category called capital investment in public facilities. That's new. That's mainly right now, the amount that's coming out of American Rescue is the Cedar Grove site. That's going to be for OEM and for Public Works. Right now, all of the supplies and refrigerators and things are spread out throughout the county. They're at the temporary sites at Sears and Kmart. We need a site to be able to put all the PPEs, put all the refrigerators, put all the vaccines. That's what that's allowed to do. The county gave approximately $45 million to the towns last year, but they did not get any American Rescue. That was monitored by myself and my partner, Kim Smeraldo. It was done on a reimbursement method. We made sure that everything complied with the Act. A lot of other counties just gave lump sums to towns and said, here you go, spend it. County Executive not want to do it that way. He wanted us to look at it, so we looked at it. The redevelopment authority was given, the state did not have the mechanism for screening all of the applications. This was for the first emergency rental assistance. That was given to the state to distribute. The NJEDA, which was for the same type of program but for small businesses. That basically covers all of the expenditures. We are expecting for next year, since we will only be under the American Rescue, CARES will be gone, all of our expenditures will shift, particularly payroll and fringe, as well as the other costs involved with tax, testing and vaccines. We really don't have, and nobody really has a clue as to where this is going, how much money is going to be spent, but the American Rescue money does go to 2024. So it's important that we retain money and maintain the flow so that we can continue with the testing and the vaccines in particular. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Abaleo. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Commissioner President, I have a question.
Commissioner Sebo.
There's a list of all the towns and how much money they have been paid. Anthony Abaleo, are they going to be paid more money or is that the amount that they, which they have received and is that it?
This is it. This program ended 12/31 of last year, and they all got American Rescue money. They got their own funding from the state or from the feds, depending upon their population.
So it's no more money from us?
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Sebo. Commissioners, are there any other questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Polack, any questions from you, sir?
No, there aren't, Mr. President.
Okay. Commissioner Gill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to follow up on line item. On the outreach, on the outreach program, so we, just so I'm clear, we spent, so the 2.7 million, that's been spent already, and so that's accounted for, that's part of the CARES Act that's already been expended? That included all the mail, the television, and all the PR?
Yes, it did, yes.
Okay. And is there, is there, is there a more detailed break out of that?
I don't have one handy. I just went through all the purchase orders at the time, just to come up with a total for this report.
Okay, so through you, Mr. President. Could I request a breakout of the outreach program line item?
Absolutely.
Great. And the ARP, so the second, the second allocation, June of '22, okay. I guess the question I have through you, Mr. President, for the administration is, there are other, and I'm sure, I'm sure also my colleagues receiving these kind of requests, there are other nonprofits that I think that are trying to understand how to, how to access this money, you know, whether it be through a county or municipality. So at this point in time, I mean, I know that Mr. Jackson has been always available to take meetings in that respect. Is there a, is there a more, do we expect a more formal process to be announced for that, for this ARP funding going forward? For the lots of different nonprofits that may fit into one of these categories?
Through you, Mr. President. Commissioner Gill, I...
Through, uh, through Mr. President, um, Commissioner Gill, I, uh, don't anticipate there being, uh, any money available of the first tranche of seventy-seven million, um, uh, available to us for, for, for nonprofits, uh, candidly. I think with the new, uh, and we see the re- response that we're getting from, from kids to take the vaccination, um, uh, more recently and the ongoing testing. And we're going to have to do another food, uh, distribution, uh, the end of this year. Um, so it seems as if the, the sort of, you know, meat and potatoes of this effort, uh, are going to continue for some time. So I don't, I don't, at the moment, I don't anticipate, uh, any of that money, that first bit, of being available. Um, and I think we have to see what happens in, uh, in June. Um, one, you know, if we, if we get the money, which we hope that we will, um, but then I think that will be the time when we will be looking at if we're going to do anything to look at, uh, doing something with nonprofits. But I, I think it's, um, I think it's a bit away because again, um, the, the, for the meat and potatoes, the money gets eaten up, uh, you know, very, very quickly. So, um, I know that's what people that may not want, want to hear. I think that's the, uh, the, the harsh reality is I don't think we're going to have it being available until, um, uh, middle of next year.
Okay. Thank you. Just a, a follow-up question. I, I must admit it, the capital investment to public facilities, what, what was that again?
That's the, uh, building up in Cedar Grove where OEM and Public Works are going to be housed. Uh, right now, there are, are equipment and supplies and the vaccines are all over the county. Some are at OEM, some are at Kmart, some are at Sears, some are at, at the county college. This building will be used to house all this, all this stuff. And as things need to be consolidated, which is going to happen somewhere along the line, that's what this facility is going to be, uh, used for.
Got it. That, that's the building that we already broke ground on?
Yeah.
That's on, on, um, what street is it on again? It's on, um?
I think it's Grove Street.
On Grove Street. Okay. Because that's a brand, so we're using that, so we're just building a brand new, a brand new facility with the ARP. Okay. And the, and the re- and the municipal money is, is, was reimbursed and the municipalities had the obligation to come back, come to us to submit potential reimbursable expenses?
Yes, they actually gave us purchase orders, canceled checks, payroll registers. Uh, we were instructed that we wanted to see what they were spending it on, and every town cooperated with us fully.
Got it. I guess the question more so I was asking is if the number, the numbers explained, the municipality had the responsibility to come to the county?
Yes, and, and, and upon order, if anything does still pop up, they're responsible for paying any funds back. That was part of the law and part of the MOU that they signed with the county.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Gill, you good?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, sir. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Mrs. The, did I ask Mr. Polavecchio already? If you had, I did. Okay.
Yes, you did. You did.
All right. Thank you for the update. We really appreciate it. Uh, and as we get, you get more information, uh, please don't hesitate to, uh, share it with the, uh, with the board. We appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Abaleo.
You're welcome.
So now we're going to move to public comment. Today's meeting is a combined conference slash board meeting, and we will vote on every item on the agenda. Please mute yourself. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had the opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration and can also call in. At this portion of the meeting, the clerk will have additional instructions for our caller. Madam Clerk.
Please be reminded, uh, that you have three minutes to speak. Uh, and make sure that all your electronic, uh, devices are on off or on mute. And, uh, you also will have the opportunity to call back later in the, uh, meeting. Uh, this part of the public comment session is for agenda items only. I'm going to turn this, uh, public comment session over now to our public information officer, uh, Charlo Malumba. Charlo?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, we have one caller waiting to speak. Uh, the caller's name is Matt Dragon. Mr. Dragon, you have five minutes to speak. You may begin. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Did we change?
My name is Matt Dragon. I'm from.
That's a good point.
I mean, I'll take it if you give me five.
You got three minutes, sir, not five.
Thank you. Matt Dragon, West Orange. Uh, thank you for K eighty-five, uh, and I hope that you'll all be voting to support the State Reparations Task Force. On K one through seven, I wanted to read you some excerpts from a Marshall Project article entitled, Daddy, if I come to you, will I have to be locked up too? Ever since I reconnected with my ten-year-old daughter in January, I've been tussling with hard questions about being a father. Staying in contact is one of the biggest challenges. I asked her to put my daughter on the phone. I heard her breathing, but she didn't speak. I asked her if she knew who I was, and she blessed me with, yeah, it's my daddy. Are you mad at me? She said no, and I took off explaining poorly why I'd been away. I didn't tell her I murdered a man. I couldn't admit that to her yet. I also told her I loved her about thirty times. Before she gave the phone back to her mother, I asked her when she wanted me to call her again. Every day, daddy. I spent the rest of the day thinking about how I could stay in touch with her. I knew it was impossible to call every day, but I had to try. This is the lived experience of every person we choose to lock up and isolate at the ECCF. And I say choose because it is a choice. And once we make that choice, these people become our prisoners, Joe D's prisoners, your prisoners, my prisoners. When was the last time you talked to someone inside ECCF? We must ask ourselves, how many daughters, sons, partners, mothers, and fathers are we also choosing to punish by cutting off or reducing those prisoners' ability to communicate with their loved ones? So I have some questions about our jail communications contract. Who are the phone, video call, and email providers at ECCF? And what, if anything, does the county pay for those contracts? How many complaints have been lodged about access to these communication methods? Charges associated with them, quality or reliability issues in calendar twenty-twenty-one? How many bids were received and when does the contract end? What are the rates charged for voice and video calls as well as emails? If those rates have changed due to COVID, when will they ret- what will they return to and when? What is the ratio of phones and devices to people held at the facility in both dormitory and cell block pods? As of today, eleven-three-twenty-one, how many phones and tablets are unavailable? Thank you. Unavailable due to maintenance or reliability issues. And prior to answering this question, what was the last time such an inventory was taken? What other policies exist that limit time on the phone or device? Costs for checking out the device or withholding a phone or device privileges as punishment? I'll stop there. I have a few more questions that I'll send over via email. But I, I would like to consider the, uh, the question of how we're treating communications with family members of people in our facility and whether or not we should be, uh, providing those free of charge. Thank you.
No, thank you, Mr. Dragon. Those are very important questions. And as is our policy, we'll, we'll relay those questions to the administration for a proper response.
Thank you. We do not have any other callers waiting to speak.
Okay, in that case, uh, Madam Clerk, we will go out of order and move to resolution number seventeen. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, uh, Mr. Hassan Mohammed and also, uh, Mr. Drake, which will, uh, address this item.
Uh, good evening. My name is Hassan Mohammed, county treasurer. Um, this resolution is to amend the capital budget to add, uh, a project was not listed on the regular budget, uh, when it was adopted, which is the project for the county college, uh, campus. And we have to amend the capital budget to, uh, to be able to introduce the ordinance.
And, and John Drake, which is adding that it is just required pursuant to the, uh, bond ordinance that will be introduced to shortly. I mean, uh, heard shortly at second hearing.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Polavecchio?
Yeah, just a question. I, I think, uh, both gentlemen explained it. It's, it's pretty basic. But what is the total capital budget with this amendment?
Uh, I'm, I'm. What was that question?
What does this increase the capital budget to for the year?
This, this ordinance, uh, this Hassan Mohammed, the county treasurer, um, this is just to amend the capital budget to include the project. And, um, there is no any down payment required for the ordinance, and the project will cost ten million dollar, and it, money will be expended and bonded next year in twenty-twenty-two.
It'll be bonded in twenty-twenty-two. All right. But what I was asking is this, this is a ten million dollar, is an amendment to reflect the ten million dollar project, right? Is there, and there's an existing capital budget. What was the existing capital budget before the addition of this project?
Uh, I believe it was around twenty million.
Oh. Thank you.
And for those commissioners who, uh, don't see Mr. McInerney, he may not be joining us tonight, but everything that he normally asks, he's gone over in detail with Mr. Polavecchio, so, uh, we're in quite capable hands. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Commissioner Luciano. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper. Absent. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano? Absent. Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Mr. President, I think, I think Commissioner Luciano seconded the motion, but he's not present.
Understood.
Mr. President, would you like to take that vote again?
Yeah, I think we need to move, um, so, uh, we'll move it and have Commissioner Mercado move it and Commissioner Sebo second it. Call roll, Madam Clerk.
Can I, can I just ask, I'm sorry, Mr. President, if, if somebody's on screen and then before they go off screen, just could they let you know, showing note? Make sure we have a head count because there's, at least on my screen, there's about twenty-five different boxes. So I don't know, we see when somebody does.
Thank you for that, Mr. Polavecchio. So, uh, commissioners, please understand what we just asked. If you're going to go off screen for any length of time, please let us know in advance. Moved by Commissioner Mercado, seconded by Commissioner Sebo. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for introduction and first reading?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. We have four.
Okay, Madam Clerk, read ordinance number one into the record at a later time.
Okay.
Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, again, um, Treasurer Mohammed and Mr. Drake, which will address this item.
Um, good evening. Uh, my name is Hassan Mohammed, county treasurer. Um, the ordinance, uh, is to appropriate the county share of the project, uh, to build a new campus for county college, uh, in West Caldwell. Uh, the project will, will cost, uh, thirty million dollar. The states will contribute ten million and the county college will contribute ten million. And, uh, and the county of Essex will be contributing the, the third ten million. And, um, the project is already started, the demolition started, and, um, the money will be spent next year. Because the, the county college will spend the state money first before they spend our funds. We're appropriating this ordinance to, for our county share.
John Drake, just to add, uh, to that, uh, the Board of School Estimate, Board of Trustees of the County College approved, uh, the project by resolution on September twenty-one, and the Board of School Estimate, uh, as required, approved the, uh, transaction for this project on October fifteenth of this year.
Thank you. I see we have, uh, Dr. Barakwe, uh, is there something, did you want to address this item, sir? Or is there something else on the agenda that you wish to address?
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm here to, um, be introduced as, uh, a new board member for our workforce development. However, the item that is being mentioned is directly, um, with the college. So I just wanted to thank everybody for being part of this, uh, for almost forty years now. Essex County College has, um, been present at the west, uh, Essex, uh, area to support the community there. Uh, we are always key to go by our mission by providing, uh, access to individuals who want to get college education. Unfortunately, the existing building that is going down, uh, was built for elementary education about eighty years now, and at this stage, uh, it was not serving as well. That is why we approached the county for the support and also to the state for the support. So I really want to highlight that if this, uh, project is completed, we may have a facility, state-owned facility that will truly, uh, provide the necessary resources we need to maintain high-quality education to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, for those of you who may not know, I want to take a point of privilege here. Um, you know, Dr. Barakwe was, uh, interim, uh, president at the college for quite some time as they did a national search. And, uh, I'm happy to say that he is no longer the interim president. He is the president of Essex County College. So congratulations to you, sir. Well deserved.
Thank, thank you very much.
All right. Moving along. Mr. Polavecchio?
I don't have anything to add to that. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing none. I have a motion from Commissioner Graham to introduce, from Commissioner Johnson, excuse me, to, uh, and a second from Commissioner Graham to introduce ordinance number one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner, Commissioner John? Uh, excuse me, was that Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Okay, that's a yes. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to ordinance number two. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, this is an ordinance naming the correction officers dining room at the Essex County Correction Facility as the Al-Mustafa Pearson Officers Dining Room. Uh, Al-Mustafa Pearson was a long-tenured employee with the Department of Correction and was well-respected by his fellow officers. well-respected by his fellow officers and superior officers, who remain inspired and moved by his unselfish act to put the safety of others before his own personal safety. Naming the officers dining room in his honor will remind those who work at the facility about his courage and his long and his wonderful legacy. Mr. Officer Pearson served 24 and a half years at the facility, and he was most recently noted for working overtime to fill vacant positions or shift for his fellows officers who have fallen ill or could not come to work during the pandemic. Officer Pearson passed away from the virus on October 6, 2020. He will be honored in May of 2022, when his name will be added to the National Wall for Fallen Officers Memorial, and we're very honored to make this recommendation to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Paul Vecchio, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Here and now, I have a motion from Commissioner Gill, and a second from Commissioner Luciano. Take ordinance number two. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Commissioner Cooper has joined us. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to ordinance number three. We'll read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, County Council, Courtney Gassion will handle this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council. I just want to be sure you can hear me okay. I've been having some issues with my audio. Great, thank you.
Yes, loud and clear.
Thank you. Number, ordinance number three is a request to amend the original ordinance that was brought before the board in December of 2019, which established the Essex County Correctional Facility Civilian Task Force. As the board will recall, the task force was established by ordinance in order to effectuate assisting Essex County detainees that were housed in the Essex County Correctional Facility with issues they were experiencing while incarcerated. As the board is also aware, earlier this year, Essex County undertook the depopulation of the Essex County immigration population or immigrant population at the correctional facility, and we now no longer have any immigration detainees at the facility. Accordingly, it became necessary to update this ordinance in order to reflect the population that the civilian task force will now be tasked with assisting, and that will be our county jail population. So there are four major points that have amended this ordinance. The first is to effectuate the elimination of all references to detainees, since it is no longer applicable, and change it to Essex County jail inmates. Additionally, just a minor housekeeping item, we did update the ordinance to now reflect the new name of the board to the Essex County Board of County Commissioners, eliminating the use of the word freeholder. We have also updated the ordinance in order to effectuate the requirement that was put in place as a result of a litigation filed by local PBA 183. In response to this ordinance, that litigation resulted in an upholding of the ordinance in its current state. However, it did make a request that the task force members undertake their training prior to their start or their commencement of their term on the board, instead of within six months of them taking their seats. So we did update the ordinance so that task force members will now receive their training prior to beginning their terms. And then the last and final change is a modification to the composition of the task force. The ordinance has eliminated a representative of the detainee population, again, because we no longer are housing that population, and it has added an additional member of the public to replace the detainee representative. There's also been a slight change with regard to the union, I'm sorry, the PBA representative, a retired member of the PBA Correctional Facility or Correction Officer, former correction officer, no longer has to be a current member of either the FOP or PBA. They only have to be a retired correction officer to now be a member of the board. So that was a modification to the task force composition. I'm happy to take any questions from the board.
Mr. President?
One second, one second, Commissioner Cooper. Mr. Paul Vecchio, any questions or comments?
Yeah, just one question, Ms. Gassion, on the composition of the board. In addition to the detainee or former detainee board member, were there other, was there at least one other board member who was an advocate, a detainee advocate, or immigration advocate that was on there? And if so, is that, is that a person who remained?
I didn't hear the last part of your question. If so...
So, I was asking, would that person, would an immigration, if there is such a thing as an immigration advocate that was a member of that board, I seem to remember that, I don't have the composition of the board in front of me, but would that person still remain as a member of this?
No, that's the position that was eliminated and replaced by a member of the public.
Okay, that was, that's different, oh, that was a separate membership than the former detainee member?
It, I don't believe there was ever a former detainee, it was a former inmate, that still remains a member of the task force. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul Vecchio. Commissioners, questions or comments? Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Ms. Gassion, this board now will receive complaints from the inmates? Is that what they will investigate?
Yes, they will, they will continue to act as an independent board in response to any complaints raised of a systemic nature by Essex County Jail inmates, correct?
And what is the process for the inmates to submit complaints to the board?
That has not changed. The ordinance still is, you know, governs the process, as does the bylaws. So there's several different methods by which an inmate may submit any complaints or concerns, whether it's medical, you know, physical, meal-wise, general conditions. They have tablets accessible to them. They can submit their anonymous complaints to the board. There's contact information that's provided to them, that's posted in the jail so they can reach out to the board. I don't have all the methods in front of me, but it is all set forth in both the bylaws and the task force ordinance, which has not been changed.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
The president was muted.
You're on mute. Mr. President, you're on mute.
Okay, commissioners, I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper, and a second from...
Mr. President, I had some questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Gill?
Thank you.
I apologize.
So, just going back to the, so the, the composition of the task force, so I understand the first two changes, the changes, the changes, one, just, one is the housekeeping item, two is just making sure that this is clear, that this now applies to the, to the, to the detainees in the facility. Would the, does the current state, does the, does the current state law or bill that was signed prohibit the county from ever having immigration detainees again?
Does the current state?
There was, there was a piece of legislation that I believe was passed, and I lost track. I thought it was signed by the governor, which, which made it illegal for county entities to enter into contracts with ICE to house immigration detainees. The reason I'm asking the question is, the, the, or really the question I should be asking is, does the county still have the right to take in immigration detainees? Because I, are we committing that we're no longer going to ever again take in any more immigration detainees?
So, as you may recall, I'm sorry, Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council, through you, Mr. President, as you will recall, that at the time that the depopulation occurred this past summer, we did not end our current ICE contract. The legislation you may be referring to, and I will have to, I'm happy to look at it further to see how it does apply to the county, but they, that may address specifically future contracts with ICE, but we do still have a current contract with ICE. That contract was not ended. What we did do was depopulate, but it did not, it did not end the contract.
Okay. So I guess, are under, without making this change, are we, is the, is the civilian task force, is the independent task force unable to respond to non-immigration detainees unless we make this change?
So, the way the original ordinance was drafted, it was specific to immigration detainees. We wanted to broaden it so that the jail inmates were included. If they're, you know, if the composition of the population of the jail changes, the ordinance would have to be modified again, but we thought that the task force, the work by the task force was important enough that it be extended to all jail residents, and as the ordinance was originally written, it did not include the county jail population.
Okay, I did not realize that. I assume that it always, I thought it, I'm sorry, I thought it covered everyone, I thought it always covered everyone. Okay.
It, it, let me be clear. It did include both, but with, by keeping the detainee portion, it was no longer accurate, because the detainee portion is no longer housed at the jail. So, yes, it did, it did always include both populations. We've now brought it back just to the county jail population.
So, so the, the contract, the contract, the current contract which still exists potentially could be utilized even, so that, that, that potential, that law that the state just enacted is, is forward, meaning it does not apply to any retroactive or existing contracts that the counties have?
I will have to confirm that for you, Mr. Commissioner.
Okay. And if the county were to assume detainees, immigration detainees, again, would this, would the, with this change, would the civilian task force still be able to respond in the same way that they had before we're making this change to immigration detainees if they were in our facility?
I think we would still have the ability to do so, or the task force would still have the ability to do so, but I think that in order to be very specific in the population that they're serving, we would want to amend the ordinance to put immigration detainees back into the ordinance, just so that we are very clear as to the population they're serving. As it stands right now, if we were to, if you were to approve this amended ordinance tonight, it would only be county jail inmates.
Okay. And it comes, so, and then the change of the composition, I'm reading it as one shall be a representative from a recognized inmate advocacy group? So that's, we're removing that, or keeping that?
So, okay, and so I'm looking at, if you're looking under 3A1, it's a, it's a inmate advocacy group, a member of a good standing of the criminal defense bar, a corrections expert, who shall be a current state or county correction officer, retired, a formerly incarcerated individual, so that, that does not have to be an inmate, a social justice advocate, an expert in the medical field, and two members of the public. So there's been an increase in the member of the, from one to two members of the public.
Okay.
And the recognized inmate advocacy group has been reduced to one. Let me pull up the old one.
So we still have how many members?
The total, the total composition has not changed, it's still nine.
Still nine. So we're, we're eliminating, we're eliminating one of the positions. It's, it's, it reads one shall be a representative from a recognized inmate advocacy group. So the question I'm asking is, is it possible for the composition under this, for this board, to not have, to not, to not have a representative from an inmate advocacy group? Based on this change?
No, that's still going to be a requirement.
Okay. And then the corrections officer, the changes regarding the union membership, the union membership?
Yeah, there, it became a difficult with regard to finding a retired correctional officer, somebody who had previously worked in a correctional facility, not necessarily our facility, that still retained their union membership, and the individual we had actually put in that slot no longer was a union member, so that would have been a disqualifier. So in order to open that up to a broader grouping, we eliminate the need to still be an active member in a, in a union. They just needed to be a retired correction officer.
Are we on the second year of our chairs?
We are. The, the, the original ordinance was passed in December 2019, so we are, we are just finishing out our second year.
Both for our chair and our executive director?
Yes, they were all, they were both appointed at the same time.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gill. Any other questions, commissioners? I too thought that the governor signed that bill where it prohibited any facilities from contracting with ICE. So I have to look at that as well. I thought he's...
Mr. President, I'm sure.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Paul Vecchio.
Thank you. My recall of that bill is you could no longer enter into any new contracts, but it didn't affect existing contracts.
Exactly, that's correct, that's right.
That was, that was my recollection as well. Courtney Gassion, County Council, if I may, Mr. President, just one further clarification, just because I want to be clear. The change on the, for the task force member, as it relates to the inmate advocacy group, the language we removed is that it was one representative from a recognized detainee advocacy group, such as first friends, and that, that is now just reading a representative from a recognized inmate advocacy group. So that's, that's the change in the language.
Thank you. Commissioner Gill?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one, one additional question. This, there's no distinction if the detainees are coming from other county facilities made here, so is that, so I'm assuming they would also be covered under the, under the ordinance?
Well, we're, we're not currently taking detainees from any, from any location.
But in the event that we do?
I think, Courtney, what he's referring to, like Union County, for example, the Union County.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Yes.
Yeah, so it would cover all, all of our inmates.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, we certainly, Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council, we certainly have contracts, as the board is aware, with other counties to take their, their county jail residents, and this will cover them as well. Any, any inmate that is housed in our jail would be covered under this ordinance, yes.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Here and now, I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper, and a second from Commissioner Gill to introduce ordinance number three. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo? Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to ordinance number four. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Zaitz and Mr. Chris will address this item.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Park. Good evening, Board. What we are proposing is some moderate changes in our fee schedule, specifically to Cody Arena, the Environmental Center, golf and permit. We have not increased fees in either 2020 or 2021. So it's been two years since we increased any fees. And as I stated, they are moderate. I will briefly go through some of the changes in Cody Arena, the Environmental Center and permit, and then our, our golf director, Tim Chris, will go on and discuss golf more in detail. About Cody Arena, we're simply just trying to keep, keep rates with similar sized ice skating facilities within the state. Moderate increases, a dollar for free stonewall, and then a four dollars for private hockey, a skate sharpening, one of three dollars. We have some new rates for pro, pro commission fees that weren't in there before. A daily rate for, as well as a visiting commissioner, visiting, visiting, uh, environmental center. We created some new categories, outreach for school groups and families of $20. Virtual class with 45 minute session would be $75. As you know, during the pandemic, virtual learning, as well as the virtual programs becoming popular, we did not have a, a fee for that. So that's something we're proposing. And then in permit, we simply went up $10 on turf fields for youth and $20 on turf fields for adults. We added a category for school attendance. Students arranged in student filming to 150 to 500. And then we created a new category for school permit for profit. It's, uh, for the profit and nonprofits. And then some, some new, uh, new rooms have been available in some of the new facilities we built, including the Feldman Milton Community Center. That's $125 per hour. That was not in there before, so we added that. And now I believe we have requests to discuss golf more in detail.
Hi, Tim Chris, Director of Golf Course Operations. In, it has touched upon some of the fee increases. But we in golf have not touched our green fees in, I believe, most circumstances about five years. So we were due for, for a overhaul, essentially looking at the surrounding golf courses, where everybody's at, you know, what, how our golf courses compare. And, you know, and then essentially the renovation work that we did at Hendrix, we felt that, you know, it's kind of in its own category now. We used to group it with Week Wake and Hendrix together. So we kind of had to separate that one. And then also there's, there is still separation between Burn and Hendrix. But now we, we've essentially got three sets of prices for all three of the courses. And, you know, although we, we have raised them in certain circumstances across the board, we're still very competitive in terms of, I mean, in a way, a competitive, I mean, we're still the best deal around. And then I'm, we're, we're comparing them to Union, Bergen, Morris, West Orange, Hudson. So, you know, maybe one of the bigger changes that we put in there is the senior seasonal pass. So we're trying to get that in line. We've been trying to bump that up. You know, so that, that would probably be the biggest one in there that you'll see. That's, you know, we wanted to bump it up and get it more in line with everything that's going on out there. Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. We're happy to answer any questions.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. This was for Tim Chris. Tim, would you, uh, uh, go back over the pricing that you're doing at each of the golf courses for individuals to play?
I, I can give you the briefs, Tim Chris. I can give you the, the quick rundown. Week Wake during the week, the adult cardholders, $22. The weekend is 28. Hendrix is 28 during the week, 34 during the weekend. And Burn is 35 during the week, 42 on the weekend. That's the adult cardholders. For seniors, essentially, it's 18 at Week Wake during the week. On the weekend, 28. Hendrix, it is 20 during the week for seniors and, and 34 on the weekend. And Francis Burn is 24 in the week, during the week, and 42 on the weekend.
Uh, what was the price last year before this increase? Before this increase, what was the price?
Uh, hold on a second. My computer just went out. So, real quick, as I look at the, our spreadsheet, the adult week, weekdays at Burn went up $4. Weekends went up $4. Let me go down here. Get to Hendrix. Hendrix was the biggest increases because the renovation went up from 22 to 28. And then on weekends, from 35 to 44. Oh, that's not a quarter older, I'm sorry. 26 to 34. So basically $6. And Week Wake, Week Wake, we didn't go up on weekdays. Weekends, we stayed the same. Seniors did go up $2 from 16 to 18. And 27 to 32 on the week. Or no, that's not a quarter. I'm sorry. Let me look here. Yeah. So, um, yeah.
That's $2, $2 also on the weekend.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, if I may?
Sure. Vice President Palmares?
Uh, quickly, just an overall statement, but I, one who has never really golfed all my life, I had find myself over there quite a bit recently in reflection to all the work that we've seen over at Hendrix. And I'm very impressed. And I took the time to meet with the director and learn quite a bit. I'm very impressed with the program. So, um, you know, I, I think it's important to share that information as well, that I think the program is bringing a lot of excitement to people who have been using it for years and these improvements that we've been doing over some time in this direction. I've been well received by a lot of people. I've received a lot of feedback since this is in my district. I don't know much about Week Wake Park because I don't, uh, set my area and I don't play, but I did get a lot of positive feedback. And in fact, feedback just came in a little while ago about a downed tree or something by a crosswalk. I thought I'd pass that along at this point since it seems to have happened either last night or today. But I had a couple of constituents reach out. They, they, I seem to get a lot of information for that park, so, but thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Ms. Paul Aveckio?
No questions.
Okay. All right. In that case, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Johnson to introduce ordinance number four. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham? Commissioner Graham? Okay. Absent. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Can I hear you?
We can hear you now, Commissioner.
I can hear you.
Okay. Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved. And Mr. President, I might ask to remind people to mute their phones if they're not speaking. I continue to hear background noise. It appears to be coming from a Mr. Emmanuel. I, I'm not sure. Yes. He muted. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, uh, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for listing purposes only?
Mr. President, we have none.
Do we have any ordinance or resolutions on second reading in public hearing tonight?
Mr. President? Yes. We have two. Ordinance O-2021-0009 and O-21-00010.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll read, let's move to ordinance number O-2021-00009 and read it into the record at a later time. I hereby declare the public hearing on ordinance O-2021-00009 open. If there is any member of the public who emailed comments for or against the ordinance, we will read it into the record, read your comments into the record and respond to you in writing. If there are any callers in the queue.
Mr. Malumba, do we have any callers in the queue?
Thank you, Clerk. Chala Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Board of Commissioners. We do not have any callers in the queue waiting to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let the record reflect, there are no comments. No letters received and no callers waiting. Mr. Paul Aveckio?
Yes. We did discuss this on first reading. It's, it's going to extend the terms for the waste disposal agreement at that, at the Covanta facility in Newark until 2025. Continuing what we have.
Thank you, Mr. Paul Aveckio. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Commissioner Mercado to close the public hearing on ordinance O-2021-00009. Do I have the same mover and a second to approve the ordinance?
Yes, President.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to ordinance O-2021-00010 and read it into the record at a later time. I do hereby declare the public hearing of ordinance O-2021-00010 open. If there is any member of the public who emailed comments for or against the ordinance, we will read the comments into the record and respond to you in writing or if there's anyone, any callers in the queue.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. To mute those.
Please mute the devices.
I can't hear you. There's a lot of feedback. Thank you.
There we go. Thank you, got cleared up just then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chala Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Board of Commissioners. We do not have any callers waiting to speak on the ordinance.
And, Mr. President, we have no emails or correspondence regarding this.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let the record reflect, no comments were received and no callers waiting. Mr. Paul Aveckio?
No comments.
Any questions or comments? Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Vice President Palmares and a second from Commissioner Sebo to close public hearing on ordinance O-2021-00010. Do I have the same mover and second to approve the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper? Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move to resolutions number one through 12, which are advising consent resolutions. Consent resolutions one through four are nominations to the Correctional Facility Task Force and the Workforce Development Board. And resolutions five through 12 are reappointments to the same boards, and we will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. First nominee for the board is Emmanuel Enzo to the Essex County Correctional Facility Civilian Task Force. Mr. Enzo, can you please get on and present yourself to the board?
Yes, sir. I'm with you, everybody. I, I started working with the Department of Corrections with the state. Formerly used to be Rowage, now he's JG State Prison. I started in 1988. And then I became the Union Vice President. And in May of 2001, the acting governor, De Francisco, he had appointed me to the Public Employee Advisory Service Board, which basically would meet monthly from different agencies, from the state police, the Department of Personnel, Human Services. Most of the, all the agencies would meet and discuss some health issues and the occupational issue that they had. And it got addressed by Louis Pannell. So then I got promoted to, to a sergeant. So I went to, I was transferred to Northern State Prison, where I was assigned to the segregation unit. The inmate had, so a, they, they never wanted to get along with anybody. They were very destructive. So they put them in the administrative segregation unit, where this is where I was supervising the custody staff and also overseeing the inmates, the basic day. And, you know, along we found out that some of them had like mental issues and so they committed an infraction. So what we did was we had to call the mental health doctors. And they would come and talk to, come and talk to the inmate and basically advise us to what to do, either to transfer this inmate to their area or treatment or to give them a charge and bring them up on disciplinary charges. Because there are some of them that had mental issues and all people were doing were just write charges. And these people get more and more time because, and then when they have those mental, they have the mental health people get involved, not only with the inmate, but with the custody staff. We had to work with the custody staff and, and the mental staff people. And so we were very, we're very successful with it because come to find out, most of them, those that committed an infraction, they had a mental issue, they had a mental issue problem. And through the mental health personnel, the custody staff, were able to negate most of the problem that we had as far as just giving them charges and giving extended segregation time just for violating some basic rules. So I had a plan of in my, working with, working with those mental health people in a best, in that area. And initially I was used, I was working under Mr. Al Ortiz. And he's now the Director of Essex County Corrections. He was the administrator when I was working there. And so I got promoted and I went, and I went to Northern State Prison. And I retired in 2017. And so I, I worked with the state and I dealt with the custody staff and dealing with the inmates as well as far as those, and also those with the mental health. the inmates as well as far as those and also those with the mental health issues. And, uh, so it worked very well and I really enjoyed it. When I was, uh, asked, I was very, very, uh, uh, enthusiastic about it to join in the task force.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For them, Ms. President. Um, our next nominee to the, to the Workforce Development Board is Dr. Boachi from, who's the president of Essex County College, who will be representative of, uh, education. Dr. Boachi.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, uh, my name is Augustin Boachi and I have been serving at Essex County College for, uh, twelve years now. Uh, but I've been in academia, especially high ed, for a little bit over twenty years. And, uh, since I started at Essex County College as a faculty member, I've been teaching economics and later I became program coordinator. Then I became the chairperson of the business division and, uh, also became, uh, acting dean of Libra and Business. About a year ago, I was appointed as the interim president of the college until, uh, about two days ago that I was confirmed as the, uh, permanent, uh, president of the college. I just wanted to, uh, highlight that, uh, when it comes to education, we all need to play a role in this. And, uh, when I was a chair, I had opportunity to work with our workforce development, uh, department to do a number of, uh, programs, especially to work on supply chain management logistics program. Uh, I am always keen about providing opportunities for people, especially individuals who may not even want to go into school for many years and have hands-on skilled, um, training for such time. So I see this as an opportunity for me to share my experience and support, uh, our workforce development, uh, programs in, in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Boachi. Uh, next nomination for the Essex County Workforce Development Board is Mr. Leota Sanders. Mr. Sanders.
Yes, uh, good evening, board members. This is Leota Sanders. Uh, I am the Chief Civil Rights and Diversity Officer for New Jersey Transit. I've been in this role for the past twelve years. Uh, I'm accountable in that role for our Office of Business Development, which oversees our disadvantaged and small business enterprise programs, ADA compliance, so compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, as well as accessibility when it comes to our customers, our passengers and riders. I'm also accountable for Title Six and environmental justice, which is equity and the provision of our services and also ensuring that, uh, we treat all the communities that we impact fairly and equitably uh, up to the highest standards, uh, what not only the federal government requires, but best practice. In addition, I'm also the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Officer for New Jersey Transit. So in those capacities, I'm very invested in, uh, all of the people that we serve in New Jersey, but specifically here in Essex County where we have our headquarters. Uh, I consider this to be our community. I've been looking for a while for ways that we could be more engaged with what is happening in Essex County. Uh, and given that NJ Transit is a major provider of economic opportunity through the procure contracts we put out on the street and a nexus for businesses in the area, given that uh, almost all of the larger scale businesses in Essex County, to greater or lesser degrees rely on our service. There's a lot of information that, uh, I have to contribute and provide and perspective uh, in terms of what is needed to, uh, get the next generation of workers and the current generation ready uh, for what the future is going to provide in terms of employment and economic opportunity. So it'd be my pleasure, uh, to be able to contribute my, uh, professional knowledge, my resources, as well as my, my personal knowledge. I have a background, uh, in education. I have a master's in education, uh, focused on race, class and gender. And so, uh, this is something that I would consider to be a personal investment as well as a professional opportunity for New Jersey Transit, uh, to contribute to the community we are a part of. Thank you for your attention.
Oh, thank you. All you do. Appreciate.
Uh, next, uh, is, uh, Ms. Hillary McCarron, who will be the representative for the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey. Ms. McCarron. Uh, we're not hearing you, Ms. McCarron, if you're speaking.
She's there. There she comes.
I know you're there. Ms. McCarron.
She's on the, she's on the.
If I may, despite the recommendation, perhaps we could, um, come back to her, um, uh, if she comes back on, we, we do have the reappointments that we can do. And we may have to come back to her because we can't, for some reason, she's not connected.
Not a problem. Let's move on.
Okay, um, we have, uh, eight renominations, uh, for, for this evening. Uh, five of them from the, uh, Workforce Development Board, I believe, and yes, and three from, uh, the civilian, uh, task force from the facility. The, uh, reappointments are Marshall Round for the, uh, Marshall, uh, for the task force, Marshall Roundtree, Ruben Sinins, Alexandra de Blasio. Uh, for the Workforce Development Board, Margaret Tyson, Joy Alaba-Jay, Alaba-Jay, Bajiji, uh, Amir Hashemi, Charlene Vichness and Robert Deal.
Okay, you want to see if we can get her back, uh?
It's her right now. She's, I don't know what's going on.
Hello, hi, yes, I'm so sorry. I had some technical difficulties here. I couldn't seem to unmute myself. I, I apologize sincerely. Um, thank you so much for the opportunity. Um, my name is Hillary McCarron. I, uh, am a thirty-year veteran at the Port Authority of New York and New Jersey. In my current capacity, I oversee port policy and planning. Um, in that role, I am responsible for bridging the gap between the, uh, port employers and maritime transportation logistics and distribution employers with the ports' host communities. Um, we actively do this through a collaborative, uh, program called the Council on Port Performance. And the council is made up of private businesses, uh, as well as members of the host community and it includes Essex County. Um, during the pandemic, the port of New York and New Jersey remained open and volumes are very strong. And while you read, um, often in the newspapers about supply chain issues, those are most notably on the West Coast. Um, the East Coast has remained quite strong. We're not experiencing the same, um, vessel delays, uh, as the West Coast. Um, but many of our employers are, um, looking for solid talent. Um, and many of these job opportunities are, um, are union positions. Uh, many of the opportunities are through apprenticeship programs. Many of the opportunities also, um, uh, require supply chain management credentials and training. Uh, we work very closely with Essex County College, um, and other local schools, um, to, um, to, to provide career pathways. We work with, uh, high schools, um, uh, that offer supply chain and vocational trade, um, to, uh, to make sure that they know about the viable transportation logistics and distribution careers in, in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you so much. Commissioners. Now, Mr. Paul Vecchio, any questions or comments?
No, I don't have.
Commissioners.
Mr. President, I have a comment.
Commissioner Sebo.
Um, I'm very impressed by all the people who are going to have appointments and those who are going to be reappointed. They have excellent resumes and we are very fortunate here in Essex County that we have so many wonderful people who are willing to give their time and energy to help our county. So thank you to all of you for being appointed and reappointed tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Sebo. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Vice President Pamares to take resolutions one through twelve as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolutions thirteen through sixteen, which are budget insertions and please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are four budget insertions. Uh, the first one is for the twenty twenty-one county budget. Uh, this is for, uh, the US Department of, uh, from HUD with the Continuum of Care Program, which provides, uh, dollars for us to coordinate the implementation of housing and service systems for the homeless in the amount of three hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. The second one, also coming from HUD as part of the continuing care program, is more tenant-focused, um, and provide affordable housing for young people, um, as defined by HUD and that is people who are eighteen to twenty-four years old, on the amount of three hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars. Uh, the third one, item fifteen, is revenue from the New Jersey Department of Transportation for our annual transportation, uh, program in the amount of nine million, eight hundred, one thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. This is our annual, uh, road paving, um, and upgrade, uh, program. Item sixteen, uh, is from the Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policing Services for the, uh, TOPS Hiring Program in the amount of one day and eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This is funds for community-oriented policing, um, and helps the sheriff's office, uh, in that regard. And this will provide for salaries and wages for fifteen officers.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Paul Vecchio, questions or comments?
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Commissioner Luciano to take resolutions thirteen through sixteen as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution number nineteen, which is from the Office of Public Information. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
President, I believe we skipped, uh, eighteen.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure did. Oh, let's move to resolution number eighteen, which is from the Office of Management and Budget and please read it into the record at a later time. And then we'll come back to nineteen.
Sounds like a good one. Thanks, sir. Uh, Trangir Muhammad is going to address this item, uh, Mr. President.
Uh, good evening, uh, Hassan Muhammad, County Treasurer. Uh, each year, the Office of Management and Budget, on behalf of the county departments and agencies, uh, comes before the board with a transfer resolution. Uh, this transfer, uh, comes within our budget and based on our projection, uh, of the county departments and agencies expenditures, potentially expenditures to the end of the year. Um, if you have any questions, I'm ready to respond.
Mr. Paul Vecchio.
Uh, no, I, I think it, it's laid out pretty clearly where the money is getting, uh, what lines they're getting moved from between the departments, which is toggling between, uh, screens, I'm sorry. Um, but I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioners, questions or comments? Seeing now, I have a motion. I'm sorry, Commissioner Jackson.
Does that include seventeen and eighteen?
No, we did seventeen in the beginning.
Okay.
I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Commissioner Johnson. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
I think she's absent. Oh, wait.
Absent. Um, Commissioner Graham. Okay, absent.
Yes.
Okay, uh, that's a yes. Uh, Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution nineteen, which is from the Office of Public Information. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, Director Pagliisi will handle this item.
Uh, good evening, uh, Board of Commissioners. This is Anthony Pagliisi, Public Information. Um, if you remember earlier, uh, this fall, we requested a similar, uh, resolution. Uh, we've expanded most of that, uh, through a variety of, uh, food distribution programs, um, to, uh, back-to-school events, um, as incentives for people to get in, to get vaccinated and also, uh, recently to senior buildings as a replacement to annual Senior Wellness Day, which we did not hold again for the second consecutive year, uh, because of, because of the pandemic. Um, all told, we gave, we distributed about, um, four thousand, five hundred boxes, uh, to about twenty different sites or events. Um, the resolution before you is to help us continue that program, um, especially around the Thanksgiving holiday. Uh, what we would like to do on November eighteenth and twenty-third is, uh, replicate our Thanksgiving food distribution program, which we did last year, um, at Cody Arena. And, uh, that's on the eighteenth. And on November twenty-third, at, uh, the Branchburg Park Cherry Blossom Center, uh, where we will distribute, uh, one thousand, five hundred turkeys and special Thanksgiving food boxes on each day. So that's a total of three thousand boxes and three thousand turkeys. Um, there's also additional money in that resolution or in that contract, excuse me, uh, which will enable us to, uh, continue to provide food boxes on a, on a limited basis or to continue the food distribution program as needed. Um, ShopRite has been a great partner with us throughout this whole initiative, um, providing the boxes and also the turkeys. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Vecchio, questions or comments?
No comments.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
I would just like to say, Mr. President, that I think this is just wonderful, that we are having the cooperation of ShopRite to enter into such a wonderful agreement. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Sebo. And I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Jam, uh, Graham. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares. Commissioner Vice President Palmares? Absent. Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolutions twenty through twenty-three, which are from the Office of County Council. Please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you. County Council, Gassion, will handle these items.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council. Resolution number twenty is a request for approval of the Legal Services Contract from December twelfth, twenty twenty-one, through December eleventh, twenty twenty-two, with the law firm of McCarder and English LLP, in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. This is the same contract we have had for the previous two years with the firm for their administration of the civilian task force. As we discussed earlier this evening, we are continuing with the civilian task force at the ECCF as it pertains to Essex County jail inmates, and McCarder and English will continue to be the administrator of the task force, and the three hundred thousand dollar contract is the payment for their fees. Would you like me to move through all of them, Mr. President?
Yeah, why not? Just, yeah, just continue, please.
Thank you. Resolution number twenty-one is the approval of the Title IVD reimbursement agreement between the County of Essex and the New Jersey Department of Human Services, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars for the period of October one, twenty twenty, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. This is reimbursement that we receive from the state of New Jersey for legal services necessary in paternity proceedings, obtaining, collecting, and forcing child support orders on behalf of dependent children or the county, which was, which provides public assistance to these children. This reimbursement is for approximately sixty-five percent of the costs incurred by our office, the Office of County Council, Welfare and Support Section, inclusive of salaries. Resolution twenty-two is this, seeking the same reimbursement, this time for the period of October first, twenty twenty-one, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of two hundred and ninety-three thousand, ninety-one dollars, and it is for the same services that are provided from the Welfare and Child Support Section of the County Council's office. This is the reimbursement, we're seeking approval for the reimbursement received from the state of New Jersey. Item number twenty-three is an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement to provide legal services regarding the matter of branch at Al versus Essex County. This is a, a contract with the law firm of Inglisino, Webster, Waika Sala, and Taylor, for the period of March first, twenty twenty-one, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. This is a request to amend that contract. The original contract was in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. We are seeking an increase of twenty, of an additional twenty thousand dollars to bring the total contract for this contract year of seventy thousand dollars. This is a complex personal injury action that this firm is handling on behalf of the county. There have been a significant number of motions and discovery exchanged in this case that requires additional legal fees to be paid to the firm. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Gassion. Mr. Paul Aveckio?
Yes, thanks, Mr. President. Ms. Gassion, I'll go in reverse order. On number twenty-three, the Legal Service, Professional Services Agreement, is it correct that we will be seeking a, another annual contract for twenty twenty-two? We're still in that litigation?
Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council, through you, Mr. President. That is correct.
Thank you. And on number twenty, the McCarder and English contract, is that the same amount that it's been the first two years?
Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council, it is the same exact amount as the first two years of the contract.
Great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioners, questions or comments? On resolutions twenty through twenty-three. Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Gill and a second from Commissioner Cooper to take resolutions twenty through twenty-three as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
He's absent. Is he?
He's, yeah, he stepped away.
He stepped away, I guess.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolutions twenty-four and twenty-five, which are from the Office of the County Administrator, and we will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Walker and Mr. Hunt will handle these items in that order, Mr. President.
Good evening, President Richardson, Board of Commissioners. Tim Walker, Director of Risk Management for the County of Essex. We come tonight seeking approval for the appointment of the Massey Agency to perform insurance broker services relative to the county's property and casualty insurance programs specific to the crime, pollution, and surety bond lines of coverage. I would add that the Massey Agency is a registered and certified minority business entity. I am open to any questions.
This, you have twenty-five as well, sir?
No, I don't. I only have twenty-four.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Mr. Paul Aveckio?
No questions on that.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Let's go to twenty-five.
Karen Hunt, CIO, Essex County, New Jersey. This contract is to purchase HPE Green Lake Flex Server and Storage Compute System, not to exceed two point seven one two million dollars over four years. Purpose is to provide a secured private cloud server data center in order to consolidate Essex County servers across all departments, reducing both capital and maintenance costs, as well as to provide redundancy and backup services.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Mr. Paul Aveckio?
No questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Gill to take resolutions twenty-four and twenty-five as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolutions twenty-six through thirty-two, which are from the Department of Parks. We'll read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Mr. Zates will handle these items.
Joshua Zates at County Parks. Number twenty-six is a contract with Resurfix to provide specialized parts and repair services, services for Zamboni ice resurfacing from November eighth of this year through November seventh, twenty twenty-three, not to exceed a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. This is specifically to service the three Zambonis we have over at the Cody Arena. The current Zambonis we have are between twelve and seventeen years old. So as you can imagine, they do need to be serviced. Number twenty-seven, contract award to Titan Mechanical piping to provide inspection service maintenance and repair of ice-making refrigeration systems for Rink One and Two at Cody Arena, not to exceed four hundred eighty-five thousand, forty dollars and eighteen cents. Specifically, this is for inspection services and then repairs if needed. The inspection services are two thousand, six hundred, fifteen dollars and thirty-two cents per month, which comes to a total of the fixed portion of this contract is sixty-two thousand, seven sixty-two and sixty-eight cents. The remaining balance of the contract is for the parts and labor of, for any issues that may arise. That would include those repairs, which would be for the compressors and what have you for the ice-making system. Number twenty-eight is a contract award to the two lowest responsive bidders to provide tree removal treatment, trimming, and stump grinding services, twenty-four months, not to exceed nine hundred thousand dollars. The two vendors are Dujets, tree experts, who would do the tree removal portion of this contract, and then Downs Tree Service, who would do trimming and stump grinding. If this board recalls, originally, the last contract we had for these services was five hundred thousand. We then went back to the board to request twenty percent, which was a hundred thousand, which then took the total contract up to six hundred thousand. With the more and more storms that New Jersey's been getting, we decided that it's in everyone's best interest to then increase this contract to nine hundred thousand. So hopefully, we will not have to go back to the board for additional monies. I do believe we have both Dujets and Downs Tree Service on the line. I'm going to ask Dujets to chime in first and discuss their portion of the contract.
Hello, this is Lucas Dujets, President.
Yeah, thank you. Just tell us, introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your company and what you're going to do for us.
Yeah, this is Lucas Dujets, President of Dujets Trees. We're located in Woodland Park, New Jersey. We've been in business for sixty-two years. We do all kinds of tree work, tree pruning, tree planting. For you guys, we're going to do the tree removal. I actually had this contract, I think it was six years ago, and we performed it with absolutely no problems. So I don't see any reason why it won't be the same this time.
Thank you. Commissioners, any?
Joshua Zates.
No questions. Move on.
Joshua Zates at County Parks. Mr. President, we do, we should have a representative from Downs Tree Service also on the line to discuss their portion of the contract.
Okay.
Michael Finicario?
Michael, we may have lost you.
Hello?
There you go. We got you back.
Hey, Michael Finicario, Downs Tree Service, Licensed Tree Expert, five sixty-one. I am the Production Manager of Downs Tree Service. We've had the contract for the past five years with the county. And when you call, we, we came.
All right. Thank you. Board, any questions? Next.
Joshua Zates at County Parks. Number Number twenty-nine is a contract award to B. Roach and Sons, in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for deer butchering services. Specifically, this is related to our deer management program. Once the deer are culled, they would then be transported to this facility, where there would then be flickered. The majority of the meat gets donated to the New Jersey Community Food Bank. The hunters are allowed a small stipend, but I am happy to announce that since two thousand eight, nearly fifty thousand pounds of venison has been donated to Community Food Bank due to the deer management program. Number thirty is a contract award to Land Tech to provide maintenance, repair, and inspection, testing its synthetic surface athletic fields, not not to exceed two hundred twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. This is simply to inspect and repair the various synthetic surface fields we have throughout the county. They conduct the semi, semi-annual field inspection, and then based on that inspection, if there are recommended repairs, we discuss it with them, and then either decide to move forward with those repairs or not. Currently, the county has thirty-two synthetic surface fields throughout the park system. Number thirty-one and number thirty-two are similar. If the board can remember back to the August fourth meeting, we inserted a four, a four million dollar grant from DCA for Hendrick Golf Course Improvement, as well as a four million dollar grant from DCA for West Side Park Community Center. Number thirty-one is a acceptance and insertion of the Hendricks Grant, which we need in order to file the application. And then number thirty-two is an acceptance and execution of the grant for the West Side Park Community Center, again, so we can file that application. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions, Commissioners? Let's move on.
Mr. President, that concludes the park items.
Oh, okay. Mr. Paul Aveckio?
I don't have any questions on any of these.
Okay. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Commissioner Graham to take resolution twenty-six through thirty-two as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill? Commissioner Gill? Absent?
Yes.
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 Okay. Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolutions thirty-three through forty-three, and the added starter, which is number eighty-six, which are from the Department of Public Works, and we will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Ortiz will handle these items.
Good evening, Commissioners. Item number thirty-three is a contract toward Great Construction, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, the superstructure replacement of Dougal Place Bridge in the township of West Caldwell. This is a two hundred and forty-day contract, and amount not to exceed nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-six and nine cents. Item number forty-four is a contract toward Great Construction, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, the replacement of four minded bridges. This is also a two hundred and forty-day contract, and amount not to exceed two million, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and four dollars and fifty-one cents. For items thirty-three and thirty-four, we have a representative from the vendor on the call, Ralph A. Diaco.
Mr. Diaco, are you on the call? I'm not sure if he's on the call, but we'll go back to him. I'm going to reach out to see if I can get him on hold.
Okay. I'm here.
Oh, you're here? Okay.
Hello.
This is, yeah, this is explain a little bit about
Good evening.
Good evening. Just explain a little about, about your company and to the Commissioners and the two projects, item number three and number thirty-four, that you're going to be working on.
My name is Ralph Diaco. I'm the owner of Great Construction. We've been in business approximately twenty years, successful years. We have two projects for you. Both are bridge construction. Dougal Street is a reconstruction of the bridge span, and thirty-four is replacement of four Culver Bridges throughout various towns throughout your county.
Yes. And Ralph, Ralph's company, Great Construction, is an SBA company and they're union shop. Thank you.
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Item number thirty-five is a contract toward ATEC Concrete, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder to construct the Etis County Historic Courthouse Promenade, for an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. We have a rep from the vendor on the call. His name is Michael Umarim. Hey, Michael? Michael, are you on the call? Okay, so we'll move on to item number thirty-six. Again, I'll reach out to Michael to see if I could get him on the call. Item number thirty-six is a contract toward APS Contracting, Inc., to provide as-needed masonry work at various Etis County facilities. It's a twenty-four-month contract extension for an amount It's a twenty-four month contract extension for an amount not to exceed six hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred dollars. Um we'll have a, we have a vendor from um, we have a representative from the vendor on the call, Daniel Carmel, are you on the call? Okay, um I'm sorry, again, I'll reach out to this individual to try to get them on the call uh later on. Number thirty-seven is a professional service agreement to provide mechanical, electrical, plumbing, engineering services for rooftop HVAC units at the juvenile detention center. It's a twelve-month contract to Isleman Group Consulting Engineers for an amount not to exceed seventy-nine thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. Number uh thirty-eight is a professional service agreement to provide design, engineering, construction inspection services for Buford and Bluefield Avenue Culverts in Livingston and West Caldwell. This has been awarded to French Perlo and Associates. It will be a twelve-month contract and amount not to exceed three hundred and ninety-nine thousand four hundred and eight dollars and twenty cents. We have a representative from the vendor on the call, John Moran, are you on the call?
Hello?
Hello, hey, John, are you gonna, hey? Yeah, you can speak to the Commissioners about your company and the work that they'll be doing.
I I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I I got to be saying it's my turn to talk, but I'm I'm number forty, so it it seems to be off a little bit.
Yeah, so, no, this is for FPA, John Moran, so I I'm assuming uh this is uh George for Pernoni?
Yeah, I'm sorry, but you know, I I was worried that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
No worries, no worries. Um yeah, so, okay, yeah, so moving on to um number thirty-nine, it's a, it's a professional service agreement to provide design, engineering, construction inspection services for scour critical remediation to various Etis County bridges by Ellis Engineering Associates. This is a twelve-month contract for an amount not to exceed a hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and ten dollars. Um we also have a representative from the vendor uh on call, Kim Law. Are you on the call, Kim? Okay, uh so pretty much this is uh.
Mr. President, I mean, I think the connection between the the vendor and here is not working, so that's why we're not, the vendors are there, they're just not getting through.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. Um so pretty much this is the rehabbing of tents, uh scour critical structures throughout the county, so there can be installation of gathering mattresses and concrete bots to countermeasure the scour issues on these structures. Um number forty is a professional service agreement to provide construction inspection services for various county structures to Pernoni Associates. This is a twelve-month contract for an amount not to exceed two hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. Um George, are you on the call? Um I'm not sure if George is still there, um but moving on to number forty-one, which is uh to provide professional maintenance service to bullies at various Etis County facilities. This is awarded to Superior Environmental Equipment Corp. This is twenty-four month agreement for an amount not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars. Item number forty-two is a contract toward ABC Fire and Safety, who are the lowest responsive and responsible bidder to provide inspection, testing and maintenance of fire extinguisher for all public work facility houses for the year twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. This will be for an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents. Item number forty-three is a contract toward Barnwell House of Tires, the sole responsive and responsible bidder to provide various specialty tires and road service tire repairs for county fleet vehicles and equipment. This is a one-year agreement for an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. And an add-on will be number eighty-six, which is a professional service agreement uh to provide design and uh services for the new building and improvement at Glenfield Park by Comedia Associates Architecture. This will be for an amount not to exceed five hundred and twenty-five thousand. We also have a rep from the vendor uh on call, but I'm not sure if we'll be able to transfer her in. Lori, are are you able to transfer in? Yeah, probably no, no luck. That'll be all, Commissioners, um if you have any questions, just let me know, and and since we couldn't get the vendors on call, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Mr. Polavecchio?
President, I I do not have any questions on these, number, most of them are uh lowest of sole responsible, responsible, responsible bidders or contract extensions.
Thank you, Mr. Polavecchio. Commissioners, questions or comments? I I have one concerning uh item number thirty-six, which is a contract extension, and I really wish I could speak to the vendor or someone who can answer, because they had quite a few issues at another facility, and I want to make sure that all of those issues have been addressed.
Yeah, so um so sorry, so Andres Gomez, speaking for the Republic of Public Works, there were some punchless items, I believe, at Wheat Cockit Park, if that's what you're uh speaking on, regardless.
It's Wheat Weight Park, and there was more than just punchless items.
Okay.
Punchless items or items that uh need to be completed. These were completed issues that fell apart, so those are not punchless. So let's, let's get the right uh uh statement out there.
Okay, uh we will definitely uh uh make sure that APS Contracting does the work that it's uh that it has not been completed um to the satisfactory to the county deserves the work to be completed in. Um I know for sure that some of the work that they they have been delayed on or haven't able to get to uh was due to the fact of the election occurring, uh but now that that has uh uh passed on, they're gonna get to it. Um so for sure, for this contract extension, um any work that is uh out laying and still uh not finished will get done. Uh I will make sure to reach out to Daniel Carmel and to the company afterwards too, to make sure that this gets completed.
Yeah, and we'll, we're, I'm gonna uh uh pull this item until that work is complete, then you could bring this extension back. So we are gonna vote on thirty-six tonight.
Okay.
Listen, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Luciano to take thirty-three through forty-three excluding thirty-six and eighty-six as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Uh and you're, you're including eighty-six in this uh vote?
Eighty-six is included, thirty-six is excluded.
Okay, uh thank you for the clarity.
Mr. President, excuse me one minute, don't we have to um remove thirty-six to the next meeting?
You're, you're right, Commissioner, thank you so much. No, no, I don't know if.
Do it after the vote.
Mr. Polavecchio.
Yeah, since you took the motion, I thought you could just do the vote, and then at the end, you could, after you're done with the vote, since there's an active motion, you could decide if you want to return it to the December meeting.
Thanks.
So I'm gonna take the vote.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
We vote, and then we adjourn the, then we adjourn number thirty-six legally.
We're gonna vote, we're gonna vote first and then decide what happens for thirty-six.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Uh Tashami, Commissioner Cooper? Commissioner Gill? Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Now, we need to make a motion to adjourn number thirty-six until the December meeting. Do you guys think that's really enough time to address all the issues that they have at Wheat Weight? Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll move it.
The December meeting.
Uh let me check for that to be sure.
December fifteenth.
Thank you, Counselor.
All right, if that's the case, then I'll move to adjourn number thirty-six until December fifteen.
I need a second.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Mercado. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo? Commissioner Mercado? Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill? Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please be reminded, we will conduct a public comment session for the non-agenda items at the end of the meeting before any other calling. Madam Clerk, can you uh give the calling information?
Uh yes, Mr. President, if you're calling in, the number is eight-five-five-seven-five-six-seven-five-two-zero. That's eight-five-five-seven-five-six-seven-five-two-zero, and use the password seven-six-nine-zero-seven-pound, Now, after you enter the password, listen for the prompt, press zero to be placed in the queue to speak during the meeting. You'll be acknowledged in the order that the call is received, uh and emails that receive for public comment will also be read after the calls are completed. So um so that is the information when we get to the next public comment session, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, let's move to Resolutions forty-four through forty-eight, which is from Housing and Community Development. We'll read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, uh Mr. Lombardi will handle these items.
Uh thank you, Craig Lombardi, Program Coordinator for the Division of Housing and Community Development. For item number forty-four, we are requesting that the board accept the contract from HUD for supplemental funds through the CDVG-CV program in the amount of two million five-hundred-seventy-thousand-four-hundred-seventy-nine dollars. The board had previously approved the the plan that we submitted to HUD and the proposed use of those funds. Again, tonight, we we are requesting that the uh the contract from HUD signifying their approval be approved so that we can then move forward and uh uh go out, seek applications for those funds, and then eventually uh disperse, disperse those funds. Item number forty-five, we are requesting that uh that the board approve the proposed allocation of another tranche of CDVG-C funds in the amount of four hundred and seventy-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The board had previously approved the allocation of these funds for nonprofit agencies that address issues related to COVID, and uh we had presented a matrix of the the applications that had come in, and we are recommending for uh for funding. So we ask that you approve those respective agencies so that we can then enter the agreements with them and begin dispersing those funds. Items number forty-six, forty-seven and forty-eight are related in that this is a request that the board approve the contract for the program year twenty-twenty-one app uh uh twenty-twenty-one annual plan from HUD. Item number forty-six specifically references the CDVG activities, totally five million five hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars. Item number forty-seven uh specifies the uh funds for the Emergency Solutions Grant Program in the amount of four hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars. And then item number forty-eight references the home program with an allocation of one million two hundred and forty-nine thousand and eighty-nine dollars. Again, the board had previously approved the plan that we submitted to HUD. HUD has approved that plan. At this time, we need to execute the contract with HUD, which will allow us then to enter the recipient agreements with the proposed recipients of those funds. Uh I am available for any questions about any of those programs.
Thank you so much. Mr. Polavecchio?
No further questions.
Commissioners, questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President.
Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you. For item forty-five, is that funding going to the same organizations, or you putting out a new RFP for new organizations?
Uh this is, so the Craig Lombardi, Division of Housing and Community Development. So uh a few months ago, we we received approval for one allocation of uh funds for non-for-profit agencies, and then we we went out and requested applications. Received those applications, and these are our recommendations for that initial uh that initial funding of four, of approximately four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. We will, we have additional funds set aside for nonprofits, which we will reopen for a second round of applications, and uh again, at that time, we'll we'll come for your approval to go out and and request the applications and then go through the same, a similar process. So this is the first group of recipients that are using our CDVG-CV funds for the allocation of nonprofit agencies that were impacted by COVID.
Okay, and then forty-six and forty-seven is the normal funding, is not CARES-related stuff, right?
That is correct. It is the, a regular CDVG ESG and and home funding that was done through the annual, the annual plan for program year two thousand twenty-one, and uh.
But forty-four is CARES or no? COVID?
Forty-four, again, yeah, that is, that was, that was a, a separate tranche of funds that came in later, that they are CARES Act money, set aside for CDVG-CV projects, and so that was, we, initial presentation to the board was that we received these funds, and here is what we would like to do with it. It was a matrix of different activities that we would cover with those funds. Uh so we submitted that to HUD, uh after the board approval, and HUD has approved that, so now we have to execute a contract with them. The next step for the, our agency is now to go out to folks and let them know we have uh funds available for different activities, and please apply for those funds. And so at a later date, we will be approaching the board with specific recommendations.
Do you have a timeline for when you're gonna put out that, that RFP for forty-four?
It, it would, it will be sometime in the year two, calendar year two thousand twenty-two. The regular act, everything is sort of combining together, I'm sorry, I should identify Craig Lombardi, Division of Housing and Community Development. Uh our, our plan is to do that next round for that in two thousand twenty-two. We do have a, a period coming up shortly for our program year twenty-two application for the regular fund, so that's gonna go uh from mid-November to the end of December. After that we are finished with that, we are then gonna go out uh with this other, these other programs and uh seek out applicants for, for those funds. We, we, we're trying to avoid too many applications for too many programs going out at the same time.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Lombardi, thank you, Mr. President.
You are welcome, Commissioner Cooper. Any other questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Commissioner Vice President Pamares to take Resolution forty-four through forty-eight as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill? Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions forty-nine through fifty-two, which are from the Division of Training and Empowerment, and we will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Mr. Director Mafer will handle these items. Uh Julius, you there? Julius, are you there?
Okay.
Can't hear you, Mr. Monford, if you're talking. Mr. President, may I suggest we move on to Mr. Coltrane's items and then come back? I think you're on mute, Mr. President.
We'll come back to resolutions forty-nine through fifty-two. And let's move to fifty-three through fifty-five.
Thank you. Purchasing agent. Number fifty-three, can you hear me?
Yes.
Fifty-three was to furnish and delivery bedding and linens to various Essex County locations. The two is Lowe's, a responsible acting supply company of New York, and Bob Barker Company of North Carolina. This is not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Resolution fifty-four is furnish and delivery supplemental clothing supplies for various locations. We have three vendors, which are Home Del Footwear, Bob Barker County Company, and Victory Supply. And this is also a not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. Number fifty-five is from the Office of Purchasing, excuse me, which provide maintenance of personal computers and other various equipment, such as calculators, if other people are using them, fax machines, et cetera. And it is to NPA Computers of Hallbrook, excuse me, New York. And the lowest bid was a hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and ten dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Coltrane. Mr. Paul Avakio?
Yes, Mr. President. All these contract awards were to the lowest responsible bidders for each of these respective items.
Commissioners, questions or comments? For resolutions fifty-three through fifty-five. Hearing none. I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Commissioner Luciano to take resolutions fifty-three through fifty-five as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes. Just a reminder, everyone, please mute your devices. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Jackson, do we have?
Yes, Mr. President. I believe Mr. Monford is on. Julius, are you there?
I'm mute caller twenty.
I'm mute caller twenty, if you can, please.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We're going to move back to forty-nine, resolutions forty-nine through fifty-two. And Director Monford will be addressing these. Correct, Mr. Jackson?
That is correct, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. The resolutions you have before you, the first one is Contracts for Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act for Youth Services Program. These vendors responded to the RFP. They were selected after they were reviewed by a committee of reviewers to provide services and training for at-risk youth in the county between the ages of sixteen and twenty-one. It's a fairly funded and New Jersey State grant. We've been doing it for the last couple of years under the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. Any questions regarding the WEOWA this part of it?
Just keep going, Director.
Okay, no problem. The next one is the high school equivalency. DRC is the state sole provider to provide high school equivalency tests, which is formerly GED. And the T test, this is the vendor that was chosen, one of the vendors that was chosen by the state. And we will be using them to continue testing all the clients who are mandatory to test on the to go into training contracts. I believe the next one is the I think that's all, am I right? What's the last one? I missed one.
Fifty-two. You have forty-nine through fifty-two.
And the other contract is the other resolution is for contract with Catholic charities to provide training programs for the Title II adults, which these are adults who are seeking training through unemployment or to better their education under WEOWA, just like the youth contract. That is fifty, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Paul Avakio, any questions on any resolution between forty-nine and fifty-two?
No, Mr. President.
Commissioners? Questions or comments? Hearing none. I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Commissioner Vice President Pamares to take resolutions forty-nine through fifty-two as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution fifty-six, which is from the Division of Family Assistance and Benefits. And we will read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, this is a contract with Harar Cafe and Catering to provide a three-twenty-one University Avenue for the DFAP Division. It's a three-year agreement with the county. The first year, they will pay a hundred dollars per month. The second year, two hundred fifty dollars per month. And the third year, three hundred fifty dollars per month, or one percent of their total income, whichever is greater. The vendor is from Newark, and it's just through a publicly advertised fair and open RFP.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Paul Avakio?
Just to repeat what Mr. Jackson said, this is revenue to the county, no cost.
Right. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing none. I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Graham roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolutions fifty-seven and fifty-eight, which are from the Office of the Prosecutor. And we will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
As you said, from the Office of the Prosecutor, the first is a professional services agreement for forensic nervous examiner and sexual assault response consultant Nancy Cox from October twenty-twenty-one through October twenty-twenty-two in an amount not to exceed sixty-nine thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars. This is again, it's a fair and open RFP. This is the same vendor as last year. The date is a professional services agreement with continuing legal education consultant and public safety academy training administrator, Ms. Hillary Brunel from October through October, from twenty-one to twenty-two, in an amount not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars. She provides training at the police academy and continuing legal education for attorneys here at the county.
Okay. Mr. Paul Avakio? Questions or comments?
No questions on these.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing none. I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Gill to take resolutions fifty-seven and fifty-eight as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo? Commissioner Mercado?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson? Mr. President, you're on mute.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolutions fifty-nine through eighty-five, which are all commendations and memorials and proclamation resolutions. And we will read them into the record at a later time. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing none. I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Johnson to take resolutions fifty-nine through eighty-five as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any additional added starters?
Mr. President, we have none.
Okay, Madam Clerk. Let's move to report of board committees. Do we have any report of board committees? Any legislative reports? Are there any written communications? Unfinished business? Any new business? Okay, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk. Let's move to public comment session on non-agenda items. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had the opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration. They also had an opportunity to call in. Madam Clerk?
As a reminder, the number is eight-five-five-seven-five-six-seven-five-two-zero. And the passcode is seven-six-nine-zero-seven-pound. Remember, after entering the password, listen for the prompt to press zero to be placed in the queue. You will be acknowledged in the order that the call was received. And any mails received will be read after the calls are completed. So at this time, I'm going to ask our Public Information Officer, Chalo Malumba, to announce the callers. And be a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your electronic devices, laptops, on while calling in. And at this time, we're only accepting calls pertaining to non-agenda items. Mr. Malumba?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chalo Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Essex County Board of Commissioners. We do not have any callers waiting to speak at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Malumba. Mr. President, we do have one email for this public comment session. The email is from Chris Parks of Montclair, New Jersey. Hello, I'm a new resident to Montclair, and I really like this town so far. But I find the driving conditions to be quite dangerous, particularly from my driveway, which is located on Grove Street. There is no parking. There is a no parking beyond the sign posted at the end of the block, which is twenty-four feet from the intersection. The little white line that sits near my driveway, that other vehicles aren't supposed to park beyond, is only three feet. I cannot see the intersection at all when I take my car out. The most I can do is honk and cross my fingers. With two young kids in the backseat, this is a risk. I do not and will not take. I have almost hit, I've almost been hit three times by cars that I can't see, and they can't see me. Please let me know what can be done about increasing the footage between driveways and parking lines on Grove Street. At least twenty feet seems reasonable and safe. It is an easy and obvious fix. In order to protect the safety and lives of Montclair residents, I'm adding Mayor Spiller's office on here as well. Thank you. And that completes our public comment session, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. As always, you will be responded to in writing. Okay, let's go to Commissioners. Any questions or comments that you would like to make? You know, I do, okay, hearing that, I do have a report that I would like to give to the Board and to the public at large. Just on a meeting that we had on Thursday, October twenty-eighth at ten-thirty a.m. I, along with the county administrator, Mr. Jackson, deputy county administrator, Matthew Dooley, and county engineer, Sanjay Vartis, and Mr. Rick Fox, and Ellen Sullivan, president and vice president of the National Federation of the Blind of New Jersey Northern Chapter, you know, we met with them to hear their concerns about accessible pedestrian signals. Specifically, the audible crossing aids was a very productive meeting. And, you know, Mr. Sanji was able to give a comprehensive update in terms of the steps that the county has already taken. We were unaware that some of the some of the the places where these things are, the crosswalks where they're put, that the county was already doing some of them as they changed the streetscape and they do upgrades. So some of the things that this, the Federation wanted to see, the county is already in the process of upgrading and doing. So from the county side, we, you know, we were able to clarify the role of the Essex County Board of Commissioners and that of the administrations in terms of the approval and implementation of accessible pedestrian signals. So this meeting was informative and a gateway to help us assist virtually challenged individuals throughout the county. The following action items resulted from the meeting, which were so the National Federation for the Blind in New Jersey will submit a list of intersections for requested technology, which will be submitted to the county engineer. And as I said previously, some of these locations are already being done by the county. So it was also agreed that a standard process, a member from the Federation of the Blind should test the volume of equipment in certain locations. One of their concerns was a couple of locations that they pointed out, the volume was actually too low. And then there were some others where the volume was too high. But it'd be beneficial to everyone if you have someone from that Federation who could test out test out, test that equipment. So, you know, that was one of the conclusions we came up with. And we certainly appreciate the National Federation of the Blind reaching out to us to ensure that this population is included in making decisions that impact them in ways that we cannot fully understand without their input. So I want to thank them for coming. I want to thank the administration, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Dooley, Mr. Sanjay, and Deborah Davis Ford, the clerk, for being there and helping put this together. So it was a very, very good meeting, very informative, and you never know what people need, you know, and what the difficulties are, and just in crossing, being able to cross the street on her own. So I, I got a lesson, and, you know, on some of those needs, and, you know, it's just great information, and we want to help all of our constituents. So thank you, each and every one of you who participated.
If I may, Mr. President, if I may...
Sure, Mr. Jackson.
I just want to commend you and Madam Clerk for pulling that meeting together. It was indeed most informative. I thought you handled it incredibly well, compassionate toward the folks who were presenting, but also taking their, their concerns seriously. We're eager to implement the agreement that we came to in terms of getting things done. And as you said, I certainly learned a lot as well. I think it was good for everybody. I just want to commend you, sir, for your leadership on that issue.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jackson, and you as well. Any other questions or comments, anything? Hearing now, need a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Move it.
Move by Cooper, second by everybody. All in favor?
Aye.
Take care, everybody. See you in the next meeting.
Hope to see you soon. Be safe.
So long.
Take care, everyone.